For Monday, July the first, two thousand twenty-four, six, six thirty. Roll call and certification of quorum. We do have a quorum. The only person missing is Commissioner McCatharine. Thanks to the introduction of the agenda and the format.
Thank you, Chair. For each item tonight, we'll have a call to order followed by staff report. Afterwards, we'll have the applicant's presentation. Following that, we'll have public comments in support or opposition to. At that time, please state your name and address for the record. Be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Following all of that, we'll have commission and staff discussion. Then the commission will vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request, or to table the item. Things that are being heard tonight with the zone changes and conditional use permits will be picked up by city council at their Monday, July twenty-second regular city council meeting. So on consent, you've got quite a few items. First of which is the excusal of absence of Commissioner Kuhn and Commissioner Stockdick from the June seventeenth meeting. And you've got approval of minutes also from the June seventeenth meeting. Then you have three extensions of plats, all of which are in the Massey Oaks Development. First is for the Lou Track South Section One. Second is for the Lou Track South Section Two. Third is for the preliminary plat of Massey Oaks Basin Number Three, Phase Two. And then you have a preliminary plat of Sudan Villas located at eighty-nine thirty-three Hawk Road. And then we have three items on new business. The first of which is a zone change from Office Professional to General Commercial at twenty-six forty-one Roy Road. Second is for a auto wash facility within the General Business District at eighty thirteen Broadway. And the third is for a cigar shop at ten two oh one Broadway in Suite eleven, one hundred and thirteen. As with that, Chair, I'll take it back to consent for y'all's consideration.
Okay, can I have a motion to? Commissioner Fuentes has to recuse himself. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Kuhn, I'll set the motion.
Commissioner Hendrick, second.
All right, anybody wishing to discuss any of it? Seeing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Then we get Commissioner Fuentes back in. All right, everybody seated. That brings us to new business. First item of business is consideration, possible actions, zone change application. Zone twenty-four dash eleven, public hearing. A request of Jessica Ruiz, applicant on behalf of Prosperity Roofing and Construction LLC, owner for approval of a zone change for point nine seven five three acres of land from Office and Professional District to General Commercial District located at twenty-six forty-one Roy Road, Pearland, Texas. Can I have a motion to approve in a second, please?
Commissioner McDonald's moved.
Commissioner Fortes, second.
Hey, that brings us to staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Let me introduce Patrick Bauer. Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. As mentioned, the zone change tonight is from the Office and Professional District to the General Commercial District on approximately point nine seven five three acres of land. The location, as mentioned, is the twenty-six forty-one Roy Road, which is just north of the intersection of Broadway Street and Roy Road. And the future land use of the property is the business commercial designation. So to date, staff prior to this meeting sent a legal ad to the newspaper which was posted. Public notices were sent to all property owners within two hundred feet, and the notification sign was placed on the property. And to date, staff has not received any comments in favor or against the request. So looking at some of the surrounding property zoning, we see some Office and Professional to the north and the east of the property, which is the same as the subject property, and then some General Commercial to the south and the west. In terms of that desert, the future land use designation for the surrounding properties, we see that it is fully surrounded by that same business commercial designation. And that business commercial designation is essentially meant for general commercial zonings as well as general business zonings. So looking at an aerial view of the property, you can see that outlined in yellow. It currently has some structures on the property, which is an existing warehouse. And so the surrounding adjacent properties are some undeveloped property to the north, as you can see by all the trees on that property, as well as some vacant properties to the east and then to the west across Roy Road. And then to the south is a dentist office and an auto repair facility. And so looking at a little bit of the history of the property, it was originally annexed into the city in nineteen ninety-five. And it was then that existing five thousand three hundred and ten square foot warehouse building was constructed in nineteen seventy-eight, and currently the property is not platted. And here we get a look at the subject property from Roy Road. You can see that existing warehouse building that goes further back into the property. It's looking at some of the review criteria. As mentioned, in terms of the future land use designation, the proposed general commercial district is compatible with the business commercial designation. In terms of the thoroughfare plan, the subject property has frontage along Roy Road, which is a major collector to be widened. And in terms of the Unified Development Code, the property is currently developed, and any future uses and development will be subject to the requirements of the general commercial district. And then in terms of utilities, the subject property has access to water along Roy Road, and sewer is located at the intersection of Broadway Street and Roy Road. It's looking at the approval criteria for a zone change. Staff found that the request met all four of the approval criteria. And specifically, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use designation of the business commercial designation. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed change in zoning from the Office Professional District to the General Commercial District. And that concludes staff's report.
Is the applicant present? State your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Ruiz, and my address is thirty-seven fifteen Belmore Lane here in Pearland. And I'm just here to answer any questions. Basically, we just wanted to get the the zone change for our business so we can, I'm sorry, so we can have it informed to what the city of Pearland wants with, wants us to do with the property.
Okay, if we have anything, we'll call you back to the podium.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that opens it up for persons wishing to speak for or against this item. Asking a second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Third and last time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that opens it up to commission's discussion. Anybody have anything to discuss on it?
Only that, to make a general comment, we have, I believe, a road to the, I hope I guess that's right. Is it, is it east or west here? I'm not even going to guess. I'm lost for a second. The Garden O'Day Mixed Use District. I believe that's to the, to the east, correct? Roy, in my opinion, when we relook at the UDC, Roy Road may fit into one of those or a similar category, or we can loop it in. It just seems to me that if you look at the first few businesses or first few uses going up, it's either vacant land or it's industrial. Going north, you see more industrial. I know, I believe there's a house, but then north of it is industrial. And even going to the east, some very large industrial use. So maybe something to look at in the future. My only heartburn with this is that when we vote the dirt, which is what we're supposed to do, I appreciate that you, you all are going to do a, I believe, a roofing company, and that's admirable. I think it fits in that area. Welcome to Pearland. My only concern is, two years later, if y'all decide to move your business or or shut down, what have you, and then you sell the land, it's, it is going to remain commercial eternity until the rules change, right? So that's, love your use for it. I'm concerned with some of the other uses that are in the commercial. And and that just gives me a little bit of pause, but probably not enough.
Okay. Let's, not seeing any more discussion on it, let's call for the vote. All those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Carries six zero. Welcome to Pearland. All right, that moves us to the, our next item in the agenda. Consideration and possible action, conditional use permit, application CUP twenty-four dash sixteen. A request of, oh, man, I'm going to butcher this. All rang, all rangsab? Highlight, highlight? Applicant on behalf of Turfing Ventures LLC. Owner for approval of conditional use permit for a car, auto wash use within the general business district on approximately two point two six one acres of land located at eight zero one three Broadway Street, Pearland, Texas. And I apologize for doing that to that name. But that leads us over to the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Once again, Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. So the conditional use permit, as mentioned, is for an auto wash use on approximately two point two six one acres of land within the general business district. Location is eighty-one three Broadway Street, which is just to the east of the Zappalack Road and Broadway Street intersection. And the future land use of the site is the business commercial designation. So for conditional use permit, notices were sent to all property owners within two hundred feet, as well as the notification sign was placed on the property by the applicant. And to date, staff has not received any comments in favor or against the request.
Chair, did y'all do a motion in a second on that?
I assumed you were just opening up a public hearing, and a motion in a second was going to come afterwards so that any proposed staff conditions could be included.
That sounds like a good idea. That's exactly what we were planning on.
Glad everyone's on the same page. Thank you. Patrick, continue on.
Thank you. So looking at the zoning of the surrounding properties, we see some single-family residential one zoning to the north, some general commercial zoning to the west. And then we see some general business to the south and a portion of the east, and then some neighborhood service with that purple area to the east, northeast. And in terms of the future land use designation of the surrounding properties, we see some similar business commercial designation to the north, east, and west, and then some retail offices and services designation to the south. It's looking at an aerial view, aerial view of the property. You can see it's a largely undeveloped lot, but there's a existing single-family residence on the property. And kind of the surrounding uses include a church to the north, a fast food restaurant to the west, a bank to the south, and then a hair salon and warehouse to the east of the property. Kind of looking at a history of the property, the subject property was developed with that single-family residence in nineteen seventy-four, and it was annexed into the city in nineteen ninety-five. I mean, if some of the commissioners remember, a request for approval of a conditional use permit for an auto wash was approved by the city council in August twenty-twenty-two, and prior it had come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And some of the conditions included at that time were regarding the exterior facade of the building, as well as screening for the drive-through lanes and vacuum stations. Since then, the property or applicant have been working through kind of the plating process and commercial permitting, and the property has been platted. However, the, the CUP expired in August twenty-twenty-three prior to that commercial permit receiving final approval. And so thus, they're coming back now for a new conditional use permit to continue forward with the project. So here we get a view of the property from Broadway Street, and you can see kind of underneath those trees is that existing residence that would be demolished for the auto wash, of course. And so here we get a look at the site plan, the proposed site plan, and kind of in the middle of the screen is where that, the tunnel would actually be, where the auto wash would actually be located with a maintenance building for like any equipment and then office space. And then to the north is the actual vacuum stations that patron, patrons can use, as well as to the south is where that drive-through lane would occur. So people would come through and kind of file through the tunnel and come out to the vacuum stations in the end. And then the detention is located at the rear of the property as well. And here we get a look at some example renderings. These are not exactly how the building will look in its kind of configuration, but this is an example of a project that they're currently developing, and this is kind of the similar materials that they would be proposing. And so in terms of auto wash locations that are within a distance of this proposed facility, there's five within one mile of the subject property. There's seven within two miles, and two of those are actually outside of the Pearland city limits. And then within three miles, there's twelve auto wash facilities, and four of those are outside of the city limits. And so looking at some of the review criteria, the proposed use is compatible with the business commercial designation. In terms of the thoroughfare plan, the subject property has frontage along Broadway Street, which is designated as a major thoroughfare with sufficient width. And in terms of the Unified Development Code, as the proposed development would be currently going through the commercial permitting process, that we are required to meet those requirements for the general business district as well as the corridor overlay district, which Broadway Street is a corridor overlay district. And in terms of utilities, the subject property has access to city utilities. It's looking at the approval criteria for a conditional use permit. Staff found that the request met seven, all seven of the criteria. And specifically, looking at criteria three and six, staff found that the request met the, or met, met the approval criteria with the conditions provided by staff, which will be provided in the next slides. And so as mentioned, the proposed use meets the established criteria for approval of a conditional use permit with the conditions added by staff. As previously mentioned, the, the proposed use is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan, including the future land use map and the thoroughfare plan. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit with the following conditions. The proposed car wash shall be developed in substantial conformance to the building materials shown on the applicant's building elevation exhibits. And condition two, the east and west property lines shall be screened with a minimum thirty-six inch continuous hedgerow of evergreen shrubs to screen the view of the car wash operations from adjacent properties. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, staff. That brings us to applicant's presentation. The applicant present?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Timor Jalili. R. Inzave is actually my brother. He's my partner. So I'm one of the founders and one of the partners in Top Sub Car Wash. I think you covered everything. I'm just going to quickly go through this presentation. We founded Top Sub Car Wash in twenty twenty.
Sir, state your address, please.
Sorry. My address is five two two five Katy Freeway, Suite four six five, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero zero seven. A little bit about us. We're an express car wash, all automated. We have a tunnel, twenty self-serve vacuum bays. We invest in the, you know, latest and greatest technology. We don't cheap out on our stuff. We use the highest quality soaps, waxes, basically to give the highest quality product to the community. Our building speaks for itself. We don't cheap out on our building as well. We use, you know, kind of like nicer facades. You know, really want to put out a building that looks nice, that is inviting and welcoming to everyone in the community as well. Here's another rendering. We're, we're huge on the community as well. We just opened a location in Missouri City. Before that, we had a location in Conroe, Texas. That was our first location ever. We do a lot of community events. We've done a, this is one event we did. We did a, you know, it was part of our grand opening in Conroe. We did an event with the food bank, Montgomery County Food Bank, and we were giving out free washes, and people from the community were bringing out, you know, canned food to kind of donate to the food drive. So things like that, we do a lot of community events, whatever we can do to kind of give back to the community in our business as well. Our reviews speak for itself. You know, we're big on quality. We're big on customer service, and we're, we're big on making sure, hey, we have an amazing product to give to the community. You can search this up. You know, our review speaks for itself in terms of quality, customer service, and just a really good product. We cover all those bases. We, my brother and I started this, and, you know, we're a family-owned business, and we really focus, we don't have a hundred locations. We only have a handful, and we really focus on the end product, the quality, and things like that. So we feel as if coming to Pearland will bring that kind of standard, and we're very confident in doing that. And then one thing I do want to say is, we did, this is our third time here. We did receive a CUP the last time we were here. It's been expired since, you know, increase in construction costs, increase in interest rates, make it really hard to build. We're now back at the stage. We've already have our plans developed. We have everything kind of ready to go. I think there's some final things that we have to finalize to get the permits, this being one of them. But we're ready to go. We're ready to start. So, yeah, that's that. And I'm open for any questions.
Okay, we'll, if we have any questions, we'll call you back up to the podium.
Okay, sounds good.
That brings us to persons wishing to speak for or against this item. Calling for a second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Third and final time, anyone speaking to, wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that opens it up to commission discussion.
Martin or Patrick, how many car wash CUPs were, I'd for approved since this was originally approved?
That's a good question. I am willing to say less than a handful. So I, if I had to take an absolute guess, probably three.
So in Car Wash Magazine in their April twenty twenty-three edition, they say that you need at least twenty to twenty-five thousand people to support one express car wash. I feel like based on the population of Pearland, we have way more. I feel like the ratio of car washes, express car washes, I mean, I know we have the, the manual ones, and there's a couple of gas stations left. The car washes have been popping up in Pearland a lot in the last four or five years. I feel like, you know, we go with what the market says. Obviously, they wouldn't build if the market wasn't there. Well, the market's there until the market's not there, right? Somebody builds that last one, and then all of a sudden, one doesn't make it, or two or three don't make it because they're spreading it out anymore. At what point do we have enough car washes? I feel like every car can be washed multiple times already in this town. Still, probably somebody's not going to make that much money. I'm just concerned about the proliferation of express car washes in our town. And I would say because of the CUP process, there's a reason. So I'm reluctant to support this at this time. They had a, had a year to get it done, and the time that they didn't get it done, other car washes have come to town.
I will kindly disagree with my commissioner friend. I, I guess I was confused. I always thought CUPs were two years. It's just one year. Two years, it's two years if they go one year and then extend one year?
Yes, and they miss the, the extension essentially, miss the time. You have to do it within a year that you extended, and they just missed it. So they're having to come back in and get the, and it happened with a similar, not a auto wash, but there was a similar gas station a year back where they had the same thing, where they'd expired and they had to come back.
Yes, yes.
And hold new approval.
Absolutely. Other buzzy bee or something like that, yeah. I remember when you came in with your brother last, last time, and I have to say, that was the best presentation I think I've ever seen from a, from a, an auto wash especially. It was very educational. You guys took the time to tell us. And if we have a new planning member, and you should go back and watch that one. It was, it was really educational for me. I think you mentioned there were four types of car washes. One that you all have where it's drive-through, and then you do the, you know, you can, you can do the vacuuming free. Outside you have, I'm going to mess this up terribly, but you have the other kind that's manual where you, you go there and you, you do the wand yourself. I think you have just one of these dots. I'm sorry, if I looked at the dots here, the one on that I just described is there where the cursor is, south of, south of Fight Road. I want to say the one to, the farthest to the east is also that. Yeah, I think that one also is a, is a hand, you know, you do your own wand there. And then you have the, the one closest to you to the west, right off of Cullen Parkway, is a different style. That's your, your tunnel that is owned by a gas station. Is that a different type? And I've lost the fourth type, but the, the farthest red dot, I think, is you're probably your closest competitor from a car wash standpoint. And then the Manville is off the main road. I think they do a little bit of detailing as well on that one. It's more of a hand drying, et cetera. But, but it's off the beaten path. You're going to put a car, you'd like to put a car wash on, on the main road for a reason. So I support, I supported it last time. I had a, a very educational, and I think when you even, when you did your, your spiel there, you and your brother, we had a member on our P and Z board that was usually, you didn't even have to think. She voted no for all car washes. She didn't like them, but she voted yes for yours because you, 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 you took the time to educate us like that. So I appreciate it. Sorry you missed that one-year window. I know the economy's been nuts. And it's been difficult to get financing, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm glad you came back. I wondered what happened. So good to see you.
Commissioner Hendrick's here. I just want to say that I know there is a lot of effort and money that goes into planning, engineering, and I would not come back and not vote in favor for it because I just know that there's a lot in that process. And so I'm for it in this case.
One thing, are you and, would you go back to the podium? Are you okay with the conditions which staff has added?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's the only thing I had to ask. All right, can I have a motion with conditions added by staff for approval in a second?
I'll make the motion, Commissioner Fortes, to approve. I'll make the motion, Commissioner Fortis, to approve this item with the conditions that staff laid out. I believe it was the 36-inch edge row trees, and that the car wash shall be developed in substantial conformance to the building materials that were shown in the applicant's exhibits. I did that from memory, of course.
Can I have a second?
Commissioner Stockdick, second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, carries five to one, thank you. All right, that brings us to considers, consideration of possible action conditional use permit. Applicant CUP 24-17, public hearing, a request by Eddie Aguilar, applicant on behalf of PCDF Properties LLC owner for approval of conditional use permit for a cigar shop use within the general commercial district on approximately 1.1614 acres of land located at 10201 Broadway Street, Suite 113, Pearland, Texas. We're going to hold off on getting a motion till we see what staff has to say.
Until the public hearing is complete, yes, sir.
Yes. All right, that kicks it off to staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Once again, Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. So as mentioned, the conditional use permit is for a cigar shop, and it's within a 1,360 square foot lease space that is located within the general commercial district. The location, as you mentioned, is 10201 Broadway Street, Suite 113. And this is at the northeast intersection of Broadway Street and Wooton Road. There's a Home Depot that's right behind there. But the future land use of the property is the retail offices and services designation. So prior to this meeting, public notices were sent to all property owners within 200 feet, and notification sign was placed on the property by the applicant. And to date, staff has received one phone call in favor and one written comment against the request, and specifically the, against the comment about any onsite smoking within the space. So looking at the zoning of the property as well as surrounding properties, we see that it's largely general commercial, with some general commercial to the north and the east, as well as some general business to the west. And then, as you'll notice, to the south, there is no color, and that's because that's within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. And looking at the future land use designation of surrounding properties, we see some retail offices and services designation to the north and the east of the property, as well as some 288 gateway designation to the west and the south. And so looking at an aerial view of the property, the yellow outlined area represents the subject property as a whole, and then the red outlined is the actual lease space on the property. And some of the uses that are within that lease space currently include sandwich shop, as well as like an eyeglasses store. And some of the surrounding properties' uses include the home improvement store, which is the Home Depot in the north. There's the fast food restaurant, which is Chick-fil-A, to the east. There's a bank to the south, and then there's some multi-tenant retail across Wooton Road to the west. So a little bit of history on the property, it was originally annexed into the city in 1996. Property was empladed in 2003 as a part of the final plat of Silver Lake Center. And the existing multi-tenant retail building was constructed in 2003. So here we get a view of the property from Broadway Street. And we get kind of a closer-up look that, right next to the firehouse subs, there's the lease spaces right here. And so here we get a proposed site plan, and outlined in yellow is that 1,360 square foot lease space where the cigar shop is to be proposed with a lounge for educating patrons about the use of, use essentially. And so looking at some of the review criteria, the proposed use is compatible with the retail offices and services designation. And then in terms of the thoroughfare plan, Broadway Street is designated as a major thoroughfare to be widened. And then Wooton Road is also designated as a minor collector to be widened. And in terms of the Unified Development Code, the proposed use is within an existing multi-tenant commercial center. And according to the applicant, there will be no exterior improvements associated with requests, requested CUP, such as changing any parking or anything. Any changes would be interior to the site, or to the building, I mean. And then in terms of utilities, the subject property has access to city utilities. And so looking at the approval criteria for a conditional use permit, staff found that the request met all seven of the criteria for approval of a conditional use permit. And proposed use, as mentioned, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the future land use plan and the thoroughfare plan. And it should be noted that any proposed smoking within the lounge or any other area on site will be subject to the city's requirements for smoking in public places, which is outlined in Section 20-9 of the Code of Ordinances. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested CUP. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Okay, let me go to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please. Okay, you can, the microphone, you're going to have to get.
Oh, the, the address, the new address, or?
Give your name and your address, where you live.
My name is Eddie Aguirre, and the new address is 10, oh, my address?
Yes.
Oh, 2102 Rock Prairie Court, Pearland, Texas, 77581.
Okay, do y'all have a presentation?
Yeah, you speak for me, because I don't speak English very well. That's all right.
Who's ever speaking, please give your name and address as well for the record.
My name is Gary Willingham. My address is 3902 Kennington Street, Pearland, Texas, 77584. This location, EA Cigars already exists. In Pearland, we're moving to a bigger spot and location that's more visible. We've already have been a pillar in the community. We support first responders, first firefighters, police officers, what have you, as well as we provide an avenue for individuals to come in and be able to digress through their opportunity to, or take in, consuming cigars. Me being an educator, I need to have a place to digress when I'm done with school. And, and we cater to individuals that need somewhere to, to have a cigar, come in, you know, watch television, something that's on, on the, on the screen, as well as an opportunity to get out of this heat that we pretty much have about eight to nine months out of the year. The ventilation, I saw one of the complaints were concerning about the cigar smoke. That would be a ventilation system that's in purpose where the, the smoke is not going out at eye level. It will go out through the top of the roof toward the back. And that back area is not anything occupied, that's the parking lot and the parking lot for Home Depot. If you've ever been in that area, you know that there's, there's, there's no tenants or residents or residential place where smoke will come in, and you're going to be smelling it in your neighborhood, or it gets into your homes, or what have you. I, I believe that it is a perfect location and will be the only cigar lounge in the, the city of Pearland. The one that was previously open is closed, which was Cigar Times, which was on the other side of 288. And so we've seen so many people who have looked up cigar shops in Pearland, didn't know that Cigar Times had closed, and made their way all the way down to where our current location is. I believe that we will be able to service more people in that area. They don't have to make that drive all the way down 518 to, to Wagon Trail, that's where the current location is. And so we needed to be in a bigger, a bigger location. And I think we'll be able to be a service to the Pearland population who desires to have a cigar smoke.
Okay, thank you. If we have any questions, we'll call y'all back up.
Okay.
That brings us to persons wishing to speak for or against this item? State your name and address for the record.
2701 Old Alvin Road, Pearland, Texas, 77581. And I would like to just speak in support of E&amp;A Cigars, my friend Eddie Aguirre. I moved to Pearland in 2017, and also work in the school district. And there are times you want to digress and have a cigar and relax outside of the Houston weather, which is hot or cold. But also, I'd just say Eddie and his business and his family give great customer service and inviting atmosphere. They're very friendly to people. And it's also just a place where you go and can network with other people, whether it's counselors, lawyers, business people, or just meeting new acquaintances and friends. So I just can't speak enough about it, because before, to go somewhere, you'd have to go to Houston or Webster or Clear Lake. And now, living in Pearland, having a place five minutes away would be a huge benefit for me, but also I feel for the community, just for people in general having a place to relax. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, if you don't mind, before you leave, make sure that the secretary gets that green sheet of paper.
Correct.
Okay, we've got two more that wish to speak, Gary Willingham, okay? All right, and a Norma McVicker?
Good evening, my name is Norma McVicker. My address, 4423 Ravine Drive, Ranswood, Texas, 77546. I'm here to support Eddie, and I just want you to know, the last three years he's been running his cigar shop, according to what you made him promise three years ago. He has a nice, classic cigar shop with an excellent environment for the customer. Excuse me, providing a good service and respect to all the customers. All these customers feel very comfortable in this cigar shop, is all I can say.
Thank you. Okay, anyone, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this? Asking a second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Third and final time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that moves us to commission discussion, anyone?
I'd just say that I think, I know there was a comment submitted through the website that had some concerns from neighboring business, but I think that the ordinance that prohibits public smoking also takes into account these sort of establishments and gives allowances for challenges if there are issues. And so I'm confident, as well as from their past experience, that they'll be a good neighbor. That'll be a good addition to the, to the area.
Commissioner Hendricks here, I think it'll be a better location for you guys, for sure. And I've not heard of any complaints. And I think I was here for the original approval. Time flies by very fast, apparently. But I appreciate you guys being good business neighbors, for sure, and citizens, thanks.
Yeah, I too, I remember when y'all came before us as well, and I, I remember kind of like on the last item that we have, getting an education, it was, we learn a lot more about air handlers and stuff like that in order to filter the smoke and stuff. So I would also be in favor. So I will entertain a motion and a second for approval?
I move to approve the CUP as requested.
Commissioner Toon, I'll second.
All right, anyone wishing to speak about it? All right, seeing none, that calls for a vote. All those in favors, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, carries six to zero. That brings us to discussion items, city council update.
Thank you, Chair. So last council item, our last council meeting was on June 24th. There were three items that were discussed on that agenda, two of which y'all had recently seen. One was from the Wayback Machine in November. But let's get started with the amendments to the Ivy District. That was heard by council, the developer was there to discuss their development. After some discussion, council took a vote, took a vote, and that vote was two to five to recommend approval. So as that is, that gained, I did not gain enough to pass, so they'll go back to the drawing board. Then we had the zone change for Province Village. If you remember, that was the request to add in the learning center to that very limited selection of uses within the Province Village PD. The, the city council voted 7-0 to recommend approval of that. So I anticipate seeing that go to second reading next week. And then we saw the comprehensive plan go back for approval. So you may have remembered, over the winter and into the spring, we did some additional outreach. Through that additional outreach and discussion, we came up with a couple of things to amend and add to, as well as making changes based off of the newly adopted Pearland Prosperity Plan. So with that, there were still a couple of things that council wanted to amend and tweak. Specifically, that was with action items 6.2 and 6.3. And that added, or they chose to have some additional clarifying language for those two action items. But with that, we did gain full approval with a seven to zero vote. We're looking forward to the consultant making those final last changes, and then we'll take it probably in the second meeting in July.
I was going to say, remind me who that one vote against on the?
I, I, what was, is it out of line to ask, what were the objections on the Ivy District?
It's not out of line, but Martin engaging with you could create an Open Meetings Act violation.
Okay, all right.
So I would just encourage you to go back and look at the video from Monday night.
Okay, all right. All right, that brings us to commissioner activity report.
Your microphone is not turned on, Commissioner McDonald.
The comments and questions that council had that were addressed in the update, did those come back to the commission so that we're familiar with what those changes are?
So I, I think the thing to say is that it was regarding accessory dwelling units. Just as a factual update, we can say that's what it was. It does not come back to you because the first reading passed, so there will be a second reading.
Yeah, I'm not saying that from a, from a process point, it had to. I just want to make sure that you were up to date with whatever changes had occurred that we understood.
So the changes were largely due to the, you may recall, there were a lot of green text throughout the action items, and those action items were based on going back to the Pearland Prosperity Plan. The comprehensive plan was being adopted at the same time as the Pearland Prosperity Plan. So since Pearland Prosperity got adopted in March, I want to say, we used that to update that, so that's why it wasn't something that we, staff felt was worth taking back. But more than happy, once it gets fully resolved, we'll, we'll start updating y'all on the news.
I, I think the request is, could you see what the changes are since the P&amp;Z last seen something?
I, I think the request is, could you see what the changes are since the P and Z last seen something? I mean, that's ultimately what you want to know.
It's just more of an update to make sure that we're, we understand what the changes were and we're not missing something.
That's something that staff should be able to provide via email to the commission.
All right. That brings us to Commissioner Activity Report. Anyone have anything? All right, that, we have a, our next planning and zoning regular meeting will be July 15th, 2024. Then we also have a city council and P and Z joint workshop on July the 22nd, 2024. Do we have anyone that knows that they're not going to be here for either one of those meetings? Okay, we have Commissioners Stockdick that will not be here for the July 15th meeting. And anyone else got anything? All right. Seeing that we have nothing else, I'm going to call for adjournment at 7:20. This meeting is adjourned.